Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good afternoon, good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the December 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Lomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bashertish?
Here.
Commissioner Biddle? Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like we have a good crowd tonight, so we'll get right to it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item three, Public Statements.
Thank you. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on item 5A through 5C and 6A through 6B, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item four, Consent Items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or a commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt.
That's Commissioner Bowers. May I have a second, please?
A second.
And Commissioner Kater. Madam Clerk, I guess we're doing the vote thing. Okay, on the computer. Thank you. Good.
Motion passes with Commissioner Biddle absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Agenda item six, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
You go with number five.
It would be item five.
Yeah, we'll go back to number five.
Public hearings. I'm sorry.
Okay, now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? In that case, at this time, the consent... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I looked at you and I...
I know, it was kind of a fake out.
Okay. Commissioner Kater would like to speak.
I'd like to request that item 5C be moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda.
Great. Do any other commissioners have any items they'd like to have set aside? Okay. Okay, so this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to adopt staff recommendations.
Commissioner Bowers, may I have a second, please?
A second.
Who's that? Commissioner Bashertash. Second. And we go ahead and cast our votes. There we go. There we go.
Motion passes with Commissioner Biddle absent.
Thank you. We'll come back to item 5C at the end of the...
Chair Coleman, if I may, it may be a fairly quick item. Maybe we can take that out of order and take that as the first item for the public hearing presentation.
All right. Nobody has any objection, I suppose we can do that. So we're just going to skip to non-consent public hearings items?
That's correct.
Okay. Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. So, Mr. Johnson, would you please give us your staff report on item 5C?
Thank you, Chair Coleman, commissioners, members of the audience. I'm just going to give a very brief overview. In essence, this is the sports complex. We have commercial on the southwest and commercial on the southeast sides. In summary, what we are doing is requesting that the commercial on the southeast be moved so we have one contiguous commercial towards the southwest. Would also like to invite Director Saldana to come up to address any questions that Commissioner Kater may have.
So, do we need to go through allowing the public comments before we move to that, Ms. King?
Technically, yes, because we are under public hearings.
Okay. We'll do that, and then we'll come back. Don't go anywhere. Okay. So, the public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Now, does any commissioner have any questions for the public or staff on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express opinions on the matter, it's only time to ask questions. Commissioner Kater.
Hi, Mr. Saldana. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting, and thank you for our call earlier today. I just wanted to ask the clarification for the removal of the PCD process associated with the... You know, there's kind of the issue of combining the sites and locating them both on the southwest, but kind of the dropping of the PCD overlay and just going with a straight C2 zoning. Would just appreciate your comments regarding that.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission...
And I'm Paul Saldana, the Director of Economic and Community Development for the city on behalf of the applicant and the owner. Yes, our proposal this evening is basically, as the staff has presented, to consolidate these two parcels into a 40-acre parcel. In reviewing this, it makes better sense from the master plan for the park as well as for the commercial developments to keep those together. I think in terms of the question that Commissioner Kater has asked, back when this was approved or at least master planned in 2007, the city really didn't have a specific process for how it would convey or develop property, and so at that time, it probably made sense to have some type of process for that. Since that time, the city has developed processes where we've taken land. The best example would be the PQ property that we own here in the downtown, and the city has gone through a process of creating plans or outlining plans for the development of that property that's conducive to the surrounding areas, that's in alignment with city regulations, and that really enhances the development of the property. And that's what the intent here is with this particular property here, is to do that same process. The second part of that is also, this is adjacent to the sports park, and the city is going through a master plan for our parks, and so we fully expect that as we have discussions to develop the remainder of that park, there will be questions about what is going to be done with that 40 acres, and we will have some conceptual plans that are developed for part of that. So, again, there will be a very participatory process in the development of that, and any conveyance of the land that we do or any development of the land will ultimately require a city council review and approval.
Just one quick follow-up, just for my clarification. I think, well, I don't think, because it's not the time to express opinion, but one aspect of the PCD is public participation. Can you be a little bit more explicit about what public participation looks like in the master planning process of this site?
So, well, two things. One, we, like, as I mentioned, we anticipate that as we go through the park master plan process, there will be questions about what is the city planning on doing with this property, and we intend to have some conceptual plans so we could show the public through that process what we envisioned for that. And so we fully expect that all of those engagements that will be taking place, folks will be able to express their thoughts and ideas with that, as well as when we go through the process of actually identifying a specific area for development, that will go through a public review process through the city council, through the development agreement process with the city council. Thank you.
Commissioner Wade?
Will that process that you're describing, will it give the Planning Commission as much, as granular level of review as we would have with the PCD?
I'll have to defer to the planning director for that.
Noting that the PCD plans go through the commission, the items that the director's talking about would go straight to city council.
Okay. So removing...
Although...
I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
I can say, although, that doesn't prevent the planning commissioners from, if there's input on this, to attend these meetings with the council, and you can also speak to your council members on that if you have special input.
Okay. So, a vote today to remove the PCD would remove our, this as being a venue for us to weigh in on a granular level the way we would currently today?
That is correct. Without the PCD, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners have any questions for staff or...
I think, just so that the commissioners can maybe benefit from the conversation we had earlier, would you mind explaining the, you know, the South Mill Creek is a different project, it's a different zoning, but the process of how these kind of public-private partnership developments, the iterative nature of them, how you kind of select a scheme and how the process works to kind of... Because I think in our conversation earlier, you know, there had been some mention of being a little bit more facile in many different things that this project might be, and I was wondering if you could explain that a little bit more.
So, in terms of the process itself, we would develop some conceptual plans that would meet all of the city's requirements, that would be conducive to the surrounding developments as well, particularly the sports park. So, we want to make sure that whatever development takes place there helps support that activity. We would then, if we were going to go through the process of entering into a public-private partnership, we would put that out and request for proposals and ask developers to submit proposals based on those conceptual plans. Those proposals would then go through the public review process with the city council and then ultimately to approval.
I guess this question is for Mr. Johnson. In that scenario, commission wouldn't really see any of the conceptual plans. We would only, in a PCD overlay, would only see the selected plan before it goes to, you know, kind of to the building process. Is that correct?
Correct. If there was a PCD overlay, it would have to come... If it was just a PC overlay, it would stop at your planning commission and would not go to city council.
Okay.
So, if it was exclusive PCD zone, then it would come through planning commission and then go to city council.
Okay. But kind of the iterative nature of multiple sites and multiple scenarios, that's not something that we would be involved in. We would only be in the scheme that was kind of moving to prime time, if you will.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Lomas would love to ask a question.
I always hate this part because opinion sneaks out, and that's not good. What is, what is the city's vision on what's going to take place on this property?
That would be the next step in the process, is developing these conceptual ideas like we did with PQ on that property, and we do want the park's master plan, or at least the sports park master plan, to inform in that process, but we don't see it as a, you know, sort of a neighborhood commercial type of development. I think that's what was envisioned in 2007, is you would have sort of service commercial in one area and potentially neighborhood commercial in the other. I think we're looking for something that is more beneficial to both the neighboring areas as well as the sports park itself. And what, in just talking to Director Johnson, we'd be happy if it satisfies the commission to, when we develop those concepts, is to have a workshop with, you know, on those concepts, come and present those concepts and get some feedback if that's what the commission's desire is.
And so, forgive me if these are stupid questions, but, so, you're looking at typical commercial development, food, retail, that type of thing?
We don't have anything specifically planned...
But it's C2, so it's...
Right.
Those are the uses.
It would be, yeah, it would be in alignment with the type of zoning that is available.
So, the city would be an owner-operator of those businesses?
No.
So, how does that work?
We would, like what we have with the PQ property, we would site-develop it and then put that out to, for proposals from developers to build what the city would like to see on that property.
The city would remain the landowner?
That would need to be determined in the future. I couldn't address that specifically until we go through that remainder of that process.
Could the city sell that land?
The city could sell that land, correct.
So, if the city sold that land, the city then would not be the developer, so then it would just, could be developed just as straight C2 with no review from the...
We, I don't think, the plan is not to just sell the land as a zone C2 property to a developer. The plan would be for us to master plan that property and sell it to be developed in the way the city would like that property to be developed.
And again, I'm confused, I'm sorry. In that, who owns the land at that point? You subdivide it again, or...
That would be subject to the development agreement that the city enters into at that point in time.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any questions? I have one question. What becomes of the other parcel that you're pulling off of?
That would, that would convert back to the, is it open space or recreation?
RE zone, which is recreational.
Right.
So, you're giving up entirely on the other parcel as ever being anything commercial related to...
That's correct.
Supporting the park.
Right. Yes. And in working this, you know, and looking at this from a long range and from a planning standpoint with the Parks Department, it makes better use of the property, especially moving as those elements move to the south and then to the west, rather than how it's split up where the, where the recreation activities are between two commercial areas now.
Okay. Thank you. So, I guess we have to allow an opportunity for, I think, did you, I saw you, I saw the screen move, I apologize. All right, so, we have to have an opportunity for any rebuttal from anybody, the members of the public? There are none, because there were no comments originally, so. I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comments and action, and I'm going to defer right off the bat to Commissioner Kater, since it was your call.
I guess I'll start the conversation, but I would really appreciate other commissioners' thoughts. I guess the struggle that I'm having with this is determining why the city's plans are hampered by a PCD overlay and not seeing a site of this size come before our commission that doesn't have a PCD overlay on it. So, that's kind of the issue I'm grappling with, is, you know, what about the process becomes really encumbered with the PCD overlay? And I guess, that's a question to staff. It's just a hard question to state as a question and not as a thought, so, that's just kind of my opening thought. I would be curious of other commissioners' thoughts, because I would say generally, I know the South Mill Creek hasn't fully realized itself, but I think the addition of a cinema downtown and the retailers that have come and the ice center, I think that there is a lot of value in places of heavy city investment like the Sports Village, looking at complementary commercial uses, so I'm open to that idea. I just am questioning that very particular aspect of the proposal and why that is the linchpin of whether this thing works or not. So, with that, I would love to hear other commissioners' thoughts.
Commissioner Wade?
I have a very narrow concern with this. I think, I don't want to be presumptuous here with the other commissioners, but I think I'm the least likely to support PCDs in general. Like, I think that level of micromanagement, I don't, I don't like doing that. What I'm concerned with here is a double standard. I want to make sure that the same level of rigor is applied to when the city wants to do a development as when a developer who comes and sits in front of us that wants, you know, certain obstacles removed from their path so that they can, you know, get from here to a profitable development as fast as possible, and they see all the headaches with the PCD causes. I just want to make sure that we're not having double standard, and I appreciate hearing that there will be a process that'll go to city council, and there's a huge, you know, plan that's put together with public comment, and that's fantastic, but in terms, I just want to make sure this isn't being removed because it's an inconvenience, because that's what we put developers through, and I just don't want a double standard, so.
Are there any other commissioner comments? Director Johnson, would you like to address Mr. Kater, Mr. Wade's concerns?
Sure. Thank you very much for those comments. I would note that commercial development within the city, you have to comply with certain standards anyway. The PCD zone, what it does allow is several factors. It allows an applicant to request deviations from standards. Without the PCD zone, they're going to be required to meet those standards. I would also note that the state is looking more towards having objective standards and taking away subjective standards, so that way, things are done more ministerially, faster and such. So, the fact that we're removing the PCD does not mean that it will be developed not meeting current standards.
Ms. Biddle, did you want to make a comment? Oh, okay. All righty then. We have a motion by a commissioner for some action on this?
I don't know where... All right, well, so, and I guess, Commissioner, just to continue the dialogue a little bit...
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, I don't think any of us presume that removing a PCD overlay is going to create a substandard development, but, you know, it exists in the city and we utilize it in the city on commercial properties of this size because we acknowledge that there is a need for public participation in the development process. For me, my concern is that that public development process, which is a requirement that we place on developers to go through, is at least equally being met by whatever the city will go through to develop this process, giving the chance... And I think there's a difference between a master planning process where there's a pretty picture put up in a community center and someone talking to you, than a hearing where public can come, voice their concerns, and a decision is made based on their concerns. So, I would just appreciate a little more clarity, and I think, you know, the presumption that removing a PCD is going to make this thing substandard or not comply with state standards is not really on anyone's, not on my mind, anyway. I don't want to speak for all commissioners.
I'm sorry. So, Mr. Johnson, can you comment? Are we bound to prove it the way it's written, or can we, can we make that...
You can, you can make the motion as you wish, because it's going to go to city council for final decision, and we're not taking away, as Director Saldano noted, we're not taking away the public input of this, we're just, in essence, taking it to a higher level, like council level, as opposed to planning commission.
Yeah.
We do appreciate all your input.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. I mean, for me, I, I'll make the first motion unless somebody else wants to make a motion.
We're waiting on you, Mr. Kater.
But I think, to me, cities are complicated, there's a lot of different paths, and for me, I just think it was important that, to the public, to know that this, this land is going through a different public process, it's not bypassing a public process, and I think the fact that the city's next steps for this is to engage in a master planning of the park system where this use will be discussed and determined, and then ultimately there is a public hearing, which is council, which, you know, even though it bypasses the seven of us, you know, the council is our elective representatives. I think, I just wanted to hear about the process, to know that this isn't just a quick stamp to avoid any public review, and I would be fine adopting staff's recommendation, personally.
And before a second is made, and again, as the director noted, we can come, so we're not bypassing the commission, we can come back with a workshop to present to your commission for comment. Again, but it would be a workshop, there wouldn't be a motion, it'd be a receive and file. The comments could be taken.
I always like workshops, I'd be fine with that. Yeah.
I think Commissioner Wade would like to...
I'll wrap it up. Just to be clear, I would support PCDs on, not this project or others, for that matter, but given things are the way they are, and I am in the vast minority with everybody, I will second your motion.
Commissioner Lomas, did you have some comment?
Commissioner Lomas, you've been wanting to speak for like, an hour. Let's, let me at least hear your thoughts.
My thoughts are, are pretty simple. The PCD, its evolution over the years and, and city standards have also evolved over the years, and given what you said about the state and how the state is going to yet again evolve, I'd like to revisit how we look at this, how we look at... evolve, I'd like to revisit how we look at this, how we look at PCDs and implementation. So is this the best way moving forward, to your point? Is this something we really should be looking at, or are, or as a straight C2, we've already got the standards there? I mean, what is the advantage and disadvantage now, is what I'd like to know, because it has changed over the years quite a bit. And then I'll stop talking, and then you come back and go, we'll figure it out. Thank you. We'll go back to their motions. Thank you.
So Commissioner Lomas is acquiescing to the motion on the floor from Commissioner Kater and seconded by Commissioner Wade. I guess we're ready, do you go ahead and vote? Go ahead and vote.
Before the commission votes, I'd like to, for the record, note that Commissioner Basher-Tash, excuse me, Commissioner Biddle, I apologize, has arrived to the meeting at 5:44.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we get two? What happened here?
The first one actually was put on the stage late five minutes ago.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yeah, you push it back to, there you go. Commissioner Bauer is catching up. Are you there? Okay.
Motion passes.
All right, good deal, we're on a roll now. Yeah, let's see, it's only six o'clock, and we got through the first one. All right, thank you, Commissioner Kater, for leading that discussion on a very important issue, so, thank you. Director Johnson, do you have a report on Item 6A?
Yes, we do, and I appreciate the applicants in the audience indulging that last item ahead of theirs. This is a general plan amendment, zone change, and specific plan amendment, and we will be having Erica Hong, one of our associate planners, present this project.
My name is Erica Hong, and I'm an associate planner with the Development Services Department, and I'm here today to present on Item 6A. Item 6A is a request to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, approve a general plan amendment, zone change, and specific plan amendment, and recommend the same to City Council for the Bellamante project located on the west side of Renfro Road at Brimhall Road. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change is intended to facilitate development of a mixed-density residential private gated community on 40.18 acres of a 51.47 acre The mixed-density residential gated community consists of 76 single-family residential homes on lot sizes of 4,500 square feet, located on the green areas as shown on the map, 112 duplex homes located on the blue area, 176 low-rise apartment homes located on the red area, and community amenities to include neighborhood parks and dog parks located throughout, and a clubhouse in the apartment home area. And here is a map showing the corresponding zone change request. The proposed specific plan amendment is to the trail alignment within the Western Rosedale specific plan. It should be noted the existing housing developments to the north of the GPA zone change area in the county jurisdiction were constructed in a manner that prevents the trail from being built out. This was recognized when your commission approved track map 7142 within the city jurisdiction and included a condition that required a specific plan amendment be processed to remove the portion of the trail alignment that could not be constructed. As such, the proposed specific plan amendment is in compliance with that condition and described in more detail in the staff report. A preliminary track map encompassing the larger 51.47 acre development has been submitted and is under review by city staff. Additionally, a preliminary site development plan has been submitted and is under review by the Site Plan Review Committee. Both the tentative track map and planned unit development plan will be brought together before your commission for consideration at a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting in the near future. At that time, the public and your commission will be afforded an additional opportunity to comment on the specific development, including design elements. Staff has reviewed the proposed development for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. Based upon an initial study, staff determined the project with mitigation would not have a significant effect on the environment, and a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared. The MND considered 20 focus areas and concluded that by incorporating mitigation measures related to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and traffic, these impacts were less than significant. No significant environmental impacts were identified. The MND was distributed for a 30-day public and agency review. Public notification for the project was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet and published in the local newspaper. Staff received written correspondence, and those were transmitted to your commission in the staff report and a planning director's memorandum dated December 2, 2021. Based on information in the record, staff recommends your commission, 1, adopt resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration, 2, adopt resolution approving the general plan amendment, 3, adopt resolution approving the zone change, and 4, adopt resolution approving the specific plan amendment and recommend these same approvals to City Council. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, Chair Coleman, commissioners and staff. My name is Patricia Newquist, I'm with Cornerstone Engineering, here tonight representing Lone Palm Farms and Frolic Development in this application for general plan amendment and zone change and specific plan amendment. First off, I would just like to say, this is the first time in the 30 years I've been doing this, that a developer has brought such an elaborate package together with all the architectural renderings and this masterfully designed development. It's a pleasure, and I'm so happy to present this to you tonight. I understand there's not a lot of opposition in the room, but we're going to go ahead for sake of allowing the commissioners to see the entire project, to go ahead and present it to you tonight. Bellamante is a mixed residential private gated community consisting of single-family homes, duplex homes, and apartment homes, a thoughtfully designed community tied together with a modern Spanish theme, creating a land use mix, reducing the development footprint with a compact higher-density project designed for multiple price points. Neighborhood walkability, expanded parks, pickleball courts, open space, dog parks, and friendly front porch living. My associate, Alyssa Palermo, will come up and read to you the project description, and we will present to you the slideshow that we presented to the neighborhood. There, go ahead and come around, girl, I'll find you. Thank you. Patricia?
Hi. So the proposed Bellamante development is a mixed-density residential development that includes single-family homes, duplexes, and apartments in a thoughtfully designed gated community with recreational features and amenities. The Bellamante project development is located west of Renfro Road at Brimhall Road. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change includes 40.18 acres located south of Brimhall Road. The tentative map incorporates the area north of Brimhall Road for a total of 51 acres. Note that the area north of Brimhall is not being changed. These lots are all over 10,000 square feet and are designed to provide a cohesive transition between the existing neighborhood and the mixed residential densities at the south side of Brimhall. Here are some examples of the single-family elevations in the area north of Brimhall. The Bellamante project offers a combination of 76 single-family homes and two types of multifamily homes. That include 56 duplex buildings and 176 apartment homes. The project consists of an overall density of 364 units over 40.18 acres. The modern Spanish architectural theme blends each residential type, creating a cohesive project design that links the density types together. The many recreational features and amenities promote open space, walkability, and connectivity as further described. 76 lots are dedicated to the development of 76 single-family homes. Each unit has a central motor court, and each home includes a two-car garage. All units are two-story and feature a front porch. The front porch is family-oriented and helps establish a close-knit neighborhood and a friendly community. It is important to note that there is room in the backyards of these single-family homes to allow for an optional pool. 56 lots with one duplex building per lot are dedicated for a total of 112 duplex dwelling units. A central motor court between each building frontage separates two duplex buildings. A backside of each unit features a private patio area. Each unit includes a two-car garage. The central side yards allow space for an optional pool, and a trellis feature at the back of the central motor court adds the architectural theme of the overall community. The apartment area includes a clubhouse and offers a swimming pool, community room, fitness center, barbecue area, and private totlot. The apartment component of the project features a mix of 18 apartment buildings. Buildings consist of two sizes, eight units, and 16 units. Each multifamily apartment building is two stories for a total of 176 units. Rear elevations include a Juliet balcony. Large landscaped areas separate the buildings and add to the overall open space and connectivity of the community. The units range from three to four bedrooms. The entire community will be provided with EV charging station infrastructure within each garage, including several spread among the apartment home parking area. Secondary access is provided throughout the mixed-density residential development. The main gated entrance is located at Brimhall Road by design. There are two gated entrances along Renfro Road, one at the southern end into the single-family and duplex area, the second entrance is on Renfro Road and serves the apartment area exclusively. The overall site is designed with both traditional and multifamily neighborhood design features and concepts. These include walkable tree-lined streets, an interconnecting street pattern which minimizes dead-end streets, and landscaped parks that provide pedestrian and recreational areas. The recreation center, common driveways, or motor courts, and common area parks and recreational features will be maintained by the homeowners association. The clubhouse area will offer a swimming pool, community room, fitness center, barbecue area, and totlot. Additional guest parking will be provided throughout the entire community. The single-family and duplex areas include two large parks. The first large park area is linear and located at the south side of the project. It includes a six-foot-wide meandering walkway with a circular midway rest area. The rest area contains benches and trash receptacles surrounded by landscape that blend perennial color at the center of the planter. Large evergreen trees, small flowering trees, flowering bushes, and ground cover complement the natural relaxing aesthetics of this open space. The second large park area is located on the west side of the project. This recreational park includes a six-foot meandering walkway and two pickleball courts. Other offerings include benches and trash receptacles, two grass areas, large-scale shade trees, and small-scale flowering accent trees. In addition to the linear and recreational parks, the Bellamante project also incorporates two dog parks. One large-scale dog park at the northwest side of the project includes a turf dog run area, fencing, and gated entry. Amenities include seating for dog owners with benches and trash receptacles, a dog waste station, a dog watering and feeding area, and a dog wash station. Landscape features include shade trees, smaller flowering trees, and drought-tolerant landscape materials and ground cover. One small-scale dog park is located centrally on the east side of the project and includes all the same amenities as the large dog park over a smaller area. The several park parks are spread across the project, which include landscaped areas around the duplex lots and between the apartment buildings. These areas create an open space component, adding to the visually pleasing cohesive look of the mixed-density residential development. And I'll hand it over back to Patricia.
Thank you, Alyssa. We're so happy to have her. She's newly graduated with an environmental engineering degree, so we're training her right. So there you have all the components of this special development, this multifamily, multi-price point development. Realize too that tonight you have the general plan amendment, zone change, and the specific plan amendment in front of you. We are planning to resubmit the tentative track map 7396 and the PUD overlay, and that should be deemed complete soon, once we work out some kinks with Public Works that we're still communicating about, and that we anticipate will come before you for consideration either late January or middle of February of next year. So we wanted to make sure that we took into account all the neighborhood comments, all your commissioner's comments, before we finalized those plans. We anticipate, again, those plans going to hearing together concurrently in January or February. In closing, I'd like to share with you some of the highlights from the neighborhood meeting. I do have a map of the area, we don't need to show that, but we had requested addresses, as you know, the city standard's 300 feet. We went 650 feet to the south, 750 feet north, and 900 feet to the east to include additional neighbors. So of the 115 property owners that we contacted and invited to our neighborhood meeting, we had 30 attend. We received a lot of comments and questions, and were able to appease everybody's concerns the evening of. I had one follow-up that reached out to me, and I was able to steer them to the Bellamante Frolic Development website, that they have a great write-up and architectural renderings on there for public reference. We did an anonymous survey after the neighborhood meeting and asked seven different questions, two of them I want to share with you. We asked, "Did you find this meeting to be informative and give you a clear understanding of what is proposed for the site?" And we had 100% answer yes, so we were happy about that. We also asked if they agreed that Frolic Development was considerate of future residents and adjacent neighborhoods while planning for the development of this project. 82% said yes. We had nine that said no, and nine that were unsure. Overall, we think we appeased all the neighbors' concerns. I mentioned we're continuing to work with Public Works, and the tentative map will be presented to you shortly. The Bellamante project represents a perfect blend of residential opportunities for renters, first-time home buyers, and empty nesters. A great place where families want to come back to, a place of beauty, harmony, health, and well-being. That concludes our presentation. We're here for questions, if your commissioners have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people who wish to speak in favor of the project? If so, please come forward and state your name and proceed.
Good evening, Chairman, planning commissioners and staff. My name is Ron Frolic Jr. I am the developer for this project. I'm the founder of Frolic Signature Homes and Frolic Development, and I've been developing in Bakersfield for about 34 years. Didn't seem like it could possibly be that long, but time flies when you're having fun, I guess. I think Barbara and I have been doing this for quite some time. You know, we've tried to have a reputation of building quality projects throughout Bakersfield during those years. Our most notable projects are Masterpiece Estates located on the corner of Brimhall and Jenkins Road, The Palms located at Allen Road and Palm Avenue, Jasmine Park, which is luxury apartment homes that we built probably 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there on the corner of Brimhall and White Rock, and recently Masterpiece Park, which is a little luxury apartment complex we built on Jenkins Road, Jenkins Road between Rosedale Highway and Brimhall Road. So this is a, we've done a lot of projects in this area over the years. Most recently, we proposed a project on the corner of Allen Road and Brimhall, which we named we named Artisan Square. And at that time, we'd promised to build a project that we could be proud of, that would be a first-class neighborhood shopping center, and I think by and large, it's been a hit with the community out there. I wasn't real happy about the PCD at the time, but it really turned out nice. We had a lot of input. Bellamante is a project that I am most excited about. It's a mixed-use project that, you know, meets all the critical needs that the housing market is facing right now with a critical housing shortage, and especially in that side of town, there's just not a lot of this type project being built. It's private, as Patricia pointed out. It's a mixture of apartment homes and duplex homes, single-family homes, and so we're real excited to be able to roll that out and hopefully get your support here. I'm available for any questions. I thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name, and proceed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. It is only time to ask questions. At this time, I'll just put on notice that we were invited by the developer to get a project overview. Commissioner Bowers and myself met with the developer. I can't remember the date. And Commissioner Lomas? Okay.
Say that.
Say what? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Lomas would like to join in on that and say that she also met with the developer, so.
Not at the same time.
Yeah, not at the same time. So anyway, we did meet the developer and share some thoughts, but didn't express any opinions on the project. At this time, do any commissioners have any questions for the developer or the staff? I guess we can skip the rebuttal and go right to closing. We will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Commissioner Kater, I see you wanting to push the button over there.
Thank you for that presentation. I always appreciate seeing a diverse answer to the housing issue that we face as a community, and I think offering different price points, different sizes, different scales, I think, is what we need to recognize, that we're a diverse community and that diverse housing needs. It's not a one-size-fits-all, single-family, ten-thousand-square-foot-lot city, so I appreciate seeing a little diversity in that. My only question is more of a staff question, and it's regarding the intersection of Brim Hall and Renfro. If we could pull up an aerial of the site, I think we have that on the... And I realize, and I recognize that tonight we were looking at a zone change and not... But my understanding of the process is that before long, we'll be looking at the PUD as well as the conditions on the project. And I was just curious, when we get the aerial up... Oh, that's the project. And sorry, it's not that. It's easier for commissioners to see, but that intersection... So Brim Hall has changed a lot over the course of... I grew up going to, is it Westdale Park, playing on the tennis courts? And Brim Hall looks a lot different now than it did then. As you continue east, I think Masterpiece Estates, Artisan Square, the Brim Hall communities have all kind of made that road standard. There's always been this funny jog right before you get to Renfro, where there's a residential fence that causes the street to narrow. And from my understanding of what is asked of the applicant, it doesn't really pertain to their adjacent property, but was just wondering, given the increased density, the proximity to amenity of a park and an elementary school, what the city's plans were to address that northeast quadrant of the intersection of Renfro and Brim Hall? That would maybe be a Public Works question or...
Yes. And if I could, for clarity, if I could have tech services offer me assistance in displaying my screen, which button I need to press? Or is that the city clerk that needs to do that, or secretary? I'm actually looking to display my screen. Up on... To display what I'm showing up onto the screen. Maybe that's the correct... In the meantime, in the meantime, I will have Public Works answer your question.
Thank you.
Hi. We had a traffic study done for the GPA zone change, and the traffic study showed that at 2021, when everything, or the opening day, the intersection will operate within acceptable parameters with the one lane each direction in Brim Hall. And then by when the twenty-year horizon, it will need to be widened and the signal is warranted. So the city already has this intersection on the RTIF list, so when the signal is warranted, the intersection will be widened. And we do have the right-of-way, fifty-five-foot right-of-way from those three lots, but it is in the county, so we'll have to go through with that, and then it will be built when it's warranted.
And just to clarify, the planned improvement of that is 2040?
That's what the traffic study has to look at.
Warranted?
Current and then twenty-year horizon, so in between sometime that will be looked at. If there's any issues, then it will be done when it's warranted, before 2040.
Okay. So then, since the developer and the parcel we're looking at tonight is developing both sides of the property, we'll have a fully built-out Brim Hall to the west and a fully Brim... Built-out Brim Hall five hundred feet east, but then they'll be narrowing to a single lane each direction?
Where?
For the foreseeable future? Is that?
Yes.
The city's plan?
Because it is warranted. It is... It's not warranted. The traffic study indicated that it's...
It's not warranted.
It's not warranted. Yes.
Okay, so we'll have a five-hundred-foot pinch point and then freeway in each direction for twenty? I'm just asking. It seems... It's the only part to me that seems a little bit odd about what we're looking at. Otherwise, I mean, what the applicant has presented, the diversity of housing... We're closed? Yeah. That's why I did not ask the question during the question time, because I didn't know how to state this without an availed opinion. Yeah. So that's the only thing, I think, for me, and I know, but I understand that that isn't necessarily directly tied to the development, but it is a concern I have about how we're looking at this intersection as a community, because it seems like a, you know, it's separation of this development from a school and a park feels like a weird place-to-place to leave it for twenty... Till 2040, for twenty years.
Commissioner Kater, one more thing. At the tract map conditions, you know, we will notify county and get their input, and since this is in the county, and see what their input is. If that's something they need this stretch to be widened, that would be part of those map conditions.
Okay, so that's during the mapping process, which...
That's through map conditions.
Okay, and we'll see that, like, in February?
Like January.
Part of the January, February?
Patricia mentioned.
Okay, thank you for that additional information.
There's the intersection that Commissioner Kater was referencing, and I think we are done now.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Lomas, would you like to ask more questions? Would you like to inquire?
We've got advertising on our screens right now, so forgive us. We've lost our presentation, and they're trying to get us to buy tickets to a comedian.
Next time, bring your credit card when you come to these meetings.
Okay, I think I was distracted by the tickets thing, so forgive me if this has already been answered. Has that process, working with the county to get something like this, gotten better over the years?
Not sure about that. We'll have to try it. When the map conditions happen in January, you know, we'll send out notification to the county and see if they have any input.
Do we already... Mr. Johnson, you were saying we already have the right-of-way there?
Yeah, we have about... That's fifty-five feet, and this is an expanded intersection, so there's going to be additional fifteen feet to make it seventy feet for the right-turn storage lane.
And the traffic study said you don't have to worry about it for twenty years, after adding three hundred homes there on this corner?
The traffic study said that you don't have to worry about it at 2021, but sometime between now and 2040, they will need to upgrade it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not a traffic engineer. Maybe the applicant, is your engineer in the audience, or Mr. Whitten? Maybe you can explain.
Daryl Whitten with Cornerstone Engineering. I... You know, this is Callaway and Rosedale Highway all over again. It usually cannot be cured without eminent domain. That's why things like this persist, because everybody doesn't like to do that, and only the city can do eminent domain. The traffic study says that we'll be okay for the near future, but I... These are just tough problems to deal with when you're going through Rosedale, because there are farms like this that have been here for a long time. Fortunately, you're not taking somebody's house out to acquire the right-of-way, but at some point in the future, the city and the county are going to have to get together and figure out how to acquire the right-of-way and then finish the construction. Or maybe it gets developed. Somebody comes in and proposes a development in there, and then they put the improvements in. But it's going to be a problem at some point in the future. And unfortunately, I don't think it's fair to put it upon this developer to go and cure it, because he doesn't have the power to compel the neighbor across the street to give their land to the city. Only the city can do that through eminent domain, and that is... That's a tough process to ask city council to do. So wish I had a better answer.
Just to clarify the map that Mr. Johnson is showing in his presentation right now?
The yellow lines that we're seeing through the site, does that indicate right-of-ways? And therefore...
Yes, it does.
Yeah, that is right-of-way. The yellow gold line is the right-of-way.
So the land is already county-owned? It's not city-owned?
That's in the county. The northeast corner is in the county.
Okay, because I think it's important, and we're having this conversation, to contextualize. It's not an eminent domain situation. It is a infrastructure priority situation, it seems like, you know? Is that a correct statement, based on the lines we're looking at on this map? Anyone? Commissioner?
Sure, jump in.
I'm going to assume that that's county GIS data, and sometimes it's right, and sometimes it's not. But even if they have dedicated the fifty-five feet, that's a good start. That alleviates a lot, but it's still not enough to do a full expanded intersection per the city standard, so there... We'd probably be able to put what we need in to get through the next twenty years, but at some point, there's going to need to be more taken.
So then, just so... The commissioners are clear. How this intersection will look when this is approved, and there is no set timeline for this portion to be addressed, is essentially the road to the west will be extremely wide and will be striped to be extremely narrow? Is that kind of what we're looking at for until my kids are in college? Is that kind of the... Is that... It's basically, because the west... The road to the west will be required by the developer to be the full right-of-way width of Brim Hall, but will it be narrowed in a similar state to how the eastern portion kind of narrows to miss the wood fence?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'm sorry, part of the... It's a weird conversation to be having of the intersection of a three-hundred-unit development, and this feels like we're talking about, you know, a country lane, and so that's just kind of my persistence in asking questions, because it seems like a great project with a weird anomaly to it, you know? And, yeah, that's kind of the...
Is Commissioner Biddle wanting to speak down there? Yeah. We'd like... Go ahead, Ms. Biddle, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, as far as the project, I mean, this is the type of housing that Bakersfield really needs. It's the discrete densification that we need in certain parts of town, so I think that's... It's really beautiful, and the security's also much needed. So to have gated communities that address all different types of budgets and different types of housing needs is really neat and creative, so thank you.
Mr. Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the developer, thank you for your commitment, unwavering devotion to our community, especially Bakersfield. I can appreciate projects like this, because it looks like you went out of the norm and you did something exceptional here, so if there's no other commissioners, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Why don't we give everybody a chance to weigh in? Commissioner Lomas, do you have any more to say? We can always count on you.
I try to be quiet, but I don't know what happens. Sorry for the... As you said, thank you for being candid. I said, "You're a brave man." Thank you for that. I really appreciate that. It is the sad... One of these sad parts of development in order... It isn't contiguous. It can't be. We wish it was, but it just really can't be. It's a struggle that we have in other parts of town, too, and it's sad that it kind of took a little damper on a really nicely put-together project. You alluded, Ron, that we've known each other a really long time, but we're not old. We're not. I used to, years and years ago, in a past life, be in the real estate business and worked with Mr. Frolic, and it's an honor and a privilege to work with someone that is devoted to his community, so I want to thank you for that. They did build a shopping center that we reviewed and went through lots of public testimony, and they listened to the community and was very receptive and made a lot of changes to accommodate their concerns, and it is a really nice... And they said, I like this part, "They said that they were going to keep it and own it." Well, how many times do we hear that? Yeah, we hear that all the time, but they really did. They do... They have maintained it and has done a good job, so I'm happy to support your project.
Commissioner Wade, would you like to comment? No? Okay. Commissioner Kater?
Yes, I'd just like to... Are there any other commissioner comments? If not, I'd be happy to second the motion.
Well, we're going to go through and let Mr. Bacher... I do have a comment, though, before you make that motion. I wanted to thank the applicant for making the effort on the community engagement, because so often, we see developers come here with opposition, and they haven't even reached out to that opposition to see what the issues were, so we appreciate that you did do that community engagement. We appreciate the expanded notice area. We always run into issues with that, especially when you're out there and there isn't anybody three hundred feet from your property, but there are interested people that are nearby, so we appreciate that. Ordinarily, I would think this is premature to do the... What am I trying to say? The zone change without the PUD, but after discussion on item five C, I guess we can probably put that one to bed for now. But I have looked at this plan, and I think this... But I have looked at this plan, and I think this is the kind of things that developers need to be looking at going forward. We haven't built these kind of patio homes in Bakersfield in the last 30 years, and the communities that have them, and I'm thinking about the Laurel Glen area that has those kind of things, and those areas are still flourishing today with the average people, and there's still, still really good features to have in the community, so I appreciate that. And that's all my comments. So Commissioner Bowers, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendations on Agenda Item 6A.
And Commissioner Kater?
Am I allowed to say something before I?
Sure.
And I will make the second, and then we'll be done, yeah. Because I think I wanted to emphasize that I really appreciate the developer and the effort in putting forward a great project. The comments on this intersection do not display my thoughts on the project. So I would, I just want to say, yes, we deal with weird county-city intersections in Rosedale, but to me, this intersection seems very ill-thought-out, not your project, your project I am excited to support. And so I would just ask, we're going to requun bean again, it sounds like end of January, beginning of February, if staff could maybe prepare what this intersection will look like at the time of completion of this project, just so that we can kind of see what, what we're going to get, knowing that this, this portion is in no way related to their project. And then with that, I would just, again, commend the applicant for providing a diversity of housing stock, and gladly second Commissioner Bowers' motion.
So it's a Public, Public Works, yeah, we would like to see somebody revisit that issue. I know you have a new Public Works Director starting at some point, and so we'd like to have that looked at, because it seems a little bit odd to leave that parcel for another 20 years. That, that's a bottleneck now, and now you're going to add 300 living units on that same corner, so we'd like to have that revisited. Maybe if we could have some kind of review whenever we do see the PUD come through. Okay, so we are ready to vote. You should have, do we have them up on the screen? We do not? Yes, we do. Please place your vote. There you go. So normally, we have something to say to people when we turn down their projects, but we don't have anything to say now, right? So we can go on. Thank you for a good, good project, we appreciate it. All right, well, moving on to Item 6B, Director Johnson, do you have a staff report on Item 6B?
I do, thank you. And while we wait for the presentation to come up, I would just like to note, the county-city coordination on areas like this, within the next year, there'll be extensive outreach between the two agencies, or jurisdictions, municipalities, as we undergo our municipal service review and sphere of influence in how we address development that would be within our sphere, but still county land or county jurisdiction. So that's within the next year, that's an ongoing discussion that will be occurring.
This last item on tonight's agenda is a request for a CUP, conditional use permit, to allow a recycling center outside of a state-recognized convenience zone for the purchasing of CRV containers from the public. To provide a little bit of background, CalRecycle, the state administers the CRV program. Because of the volume of CRV glass and bottles that are sold at supermarkets, every supermarket that's identified by the state must provide an opportunity to redeem CRV items within a half-mile radius, and this is what we call a convenience zone, and that's going to be important as we move forward through this presentation. So again, a convenience zone is a half-mile radius from every supermarket. Within this half-mile, they can either redeem CRV bottles and cans within the store, which is something you used to see previously, but for obvious health reasons, you do not see that very often anymore. You can redeem through a private recycler, or a supermarket can pay $100 per day, similar to like a fine. So what defines a supermarket? It's a, a business that sells dry groceries, canned goods, or non-food items imperishables, has a gross annual sale of $2 million or more, and is identified in the Progressive Grocer Marketing Handbook or Guidebook, something that, that would be like Superior Grocers, Albertsons, Vons, the bigger supermarkets. This specific project site is loaded, located just off of Brundage Lane, west of Union Avenue, between Highway 58 to the south. It is currently Zoned C2, regional commercial. Little background on the Bakersfield Municipal Code. It used to be, prior to 2018, if there was a recycling operation proposed within a convenience zone, in most commercial and industrial zones, it was by right, so it just went through a site plan review, ministerial-type action. If it was outside a convenience zone, they could apply for a conditional use permit in commercial and industrial zones. And we were processing approximately, two a year, so from 2008 to 2018, when this became a very hot topic, there were approximately 20 CRV locations approved within the city outside of a convenience zone. In March of 2018, city council made a referral to staff to take a look at how we are processing CRV recycling facilities, and this was due to the negative impacts of aesthetics, noise, smell, rodents, big increase in shopping carts, and really, they were becoming an attractive nuisance to the homeless population. So throughout that 10 months or so, we did, staff did a lot of research with other jurisdictions, coordinated with CalRecycle at the state to make sure everything was done correctly, and in the end, the city council, and this went through your planning commission first, revised the ordinance so that within a convenience zone only, a conditional use permit was required in all commercial and industrial zones except the M3 zone. Outside a convenience zone, recycling facilities would no longer be permitted, in essence, prohibited. Again, as I noted, this site is outside a convenience zone. Staff did get with CalRecycle, and supervisor of the convenience zone unit provided staff comment that, written confirmation that this site is, again, outside a convenience zone. Therefore, there's two findings your condition, or excuse me, your commission must make in order to approve a conditional use permit, one, that it's deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and it's in harmony with the various elements, objectives of the general plan. Staff believes those findings cannot be made at the current location, being outside a convenience zone, therefore, staff recommends denial. Staff is willing, and we've been, this has been offered to the applicant also, that if they find a different location, we'll work with them, and if it's within a convenience zone, we believe those findings could be made. This completes staff's presentation.
Thank you. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item, public or staff? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions, it's only the time to ask questions. Mr. Kater, you're still on here, did you want to?
Oh, I just want to cancel.
Okay, I'll, I'll remove it, okay. All right, there we go, okay. Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Paul, is the applicant, Mr. Johnson, is the applicant here?
Not that we see, I do see one member in the audience. I can ask staff if they would go and speak with him and see if he represents a certain side.
Just making sure that?
No, the applicant is not here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to commission for comment and action.
If I could have one more comment, and I'll keep it very brief, is, we did advise the applicant upfront, typically, we do not like bringing denials forward to your commission, but this is something that was requested to bring forward, so we processed as requested, as was, and the applicant did pay for your decision.
Thank you. Looking for comments or motions from commission?
Making a motion to adopt?
Does a motion to accept staff recommendation?
To accept staff recommendation, yeah.
Okay, that's Commissioner Bashertash. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you.
We will... Commissioner Bowers is asking if the, if he's entitled to get any kind of refund on his application fees?
No.
Okay. Are we going to, I'm sorry, maybe it's me. Madam Clerk, we're looking to vote. There you go, thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 7, communications.
Does staff any, have any communication items?
I do. And Commissioner Bowers, that no was fairly quick, but I would note that we do offer an applicant refunds if they were to withdraw a request prior to getting to a certain point, but there is fees that staff goes through in writing a report, preparing all the documents, doing the outreach to the neighbors through the public hearing process, so that, that's why, at this point, there would be no refund. I would also note tomorrow, you should be receiving the calendar for next year's planning commission dates, again, the first and third Thursday of every month, and we do have a meeting in two weeks, and that will be the meeting where we will also bring back, as you may recall, the truck stop off of Tapped Highway, 16th. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 8, commission comments.
Do any commissioners have any comments? Next item, please.
Agenda Item 9, adjournment.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.